Maplewood City Council Manager Workshop of August 12th. Have our City Manager please do the roll call.
Thank you, Acting Mayor. Councilmember Neblet?
Present.
Councilmember Smith?
Here.
Councilmember Knutson?
Here.
And Acting Mayor Kathleen Judeman?
Here.
So, do I have an approval, a motion for approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Carry it. Moved by Knutson and seconded by Smith, I think.
Mm-hmm.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, there is no unfinished business and we have more than enough new business to last us for a long time.
Mm-hmm.
And the City Manager would like to make a slight change in the new business.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to suggest to the Mayor and Council that we change the order of the presentations tonight so that we make sure we have time for the budget presentation and also public safety and public works. And if we, everybody stays to script, we should be able to get through everything in the 90 minutes, but if not, we will move the Community Development Department presentation to our next meeting on the 26th, I believe.
Okay.
So, we'll start with the city budget presentation.
Yep.
Have the public safety presentation number two. Public works number three. And community development. I think I changed, I, I'm sorry, I messed that up.
You did.
Yeah, we're starting with Ellie.
Yes.
Then we're doing public works.
Yes.
Then we're doing public safety.
Oh, okay.
And then we're doing community development.
Got it, thank you. Do we need a motion or can we just?
I think you should have a motion, probably.
Okay, do I hear a motion to, for the change in the order of the agenda?
So moved.
Circle.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Please take it away, City Manager.
Okay. So, of course, these are out of order now. And I didn't tab them.
I remember, I remembered that the first one is Ellie.
Well, that was good, so you're ahead of me.
City Managers Budget Workshop Number One.
Mm-hmm. Well, I think, Mayor, members of the council, I'll just turn it over to Ellie. This is the first workshop. As you know, tonight, we're going to be approving the preliminary levy. And so, Ms. Paul, this is going to go through the budget. And I think most of this is pretty familiar. There might be a few little nuances that have changed since we last talked to you about it, but with that, I would ask you just to call on our Finance Director Ellie Paulseth.
Ms. Paulseth. Thank you, Mayor and Council. I will try to move through this rather quickly tonight, move through the slides as we do have a full session tonight. But I will be happy to spend as much time going back over the slides and answering questions as you need. Some of it will be review, so I'll try to go through as quickly as possible. I do want to point out before I start the slides tonight, on packet number, workshop, packet page number 59 starts something that I kind of provide every year. So this is a little more in-depth for those of you who need something to read maybe late at night. So it starts with a cover page, and there's a page that talks about how the budget gets established and how the tax levy gets established. And what I wanted to point out is if you really wanted to get into the nitty-gritty, department by department or function by function, you know, starting on page, workshop packet page number 64, or page four of the handout, we go through function by function and department by department, exploiting the changes. Also attached then is the detailed line-by-line budget for the general fund, so this is primarily general fund that we're talking about. There's a single-page summary of the general fund, and then behind that, a detailed line-by-line budget going to the end of the pages 133, I believe it is, or 111. So that's for those of you who really want to take a deeper dive, I just want to caution you that it can be kind of confusing. There are a number of accounting structure changes that can be confusing. For instance, we are moving the recreation fund back into the general fund, number of good reasons for that, but that could look confusing. We also streamlined some of the departmental accounts again this year, so some departments will look like they have all zeros, but it's just that we've combined those more efficiently into one departmental budget, specifically this year, the Community Development Department. And also, you might notice some really large differences in the insurance line items, so we've done something differently this year. We, we are charging the insurance costs, both workers' comp and liability insurance, directly to the department in which the league assigned that amount of premium or risk. In the past, it has been actually spread equally based on payroll numbers. For instance, workers' comp was based on the amount of payroll rather than the amount of the risk that's assigned by the league. And we decided to change that for a number of reasons, you know, so that those departments are more aware of what's happening with their insurance premiums and their trends. And also because, I'll just give you, for instance, when we were working on the new fire, fire model, firefighter model, we did a lot of projections on, you know, what it would cost to have full-time firefighters, et cetera, et cetera. And firefighting is a very dangerous job, so there's a real high workers' comp rate attached to that. But the way that it traditionally has been done in the payroll is everyone gets charged an equal rate, so that's something that just didn't come out quite right when we were making those projections. And so, it was, it's, it's something that we've got under control, but it would have been just a little easier to manage had we had a more accurate system in place, so. So you'll just notice that if you are walking through the line items, you will see a lot of big numbers changing in the insurance line items. Just wanted to warn you upfront, please feel free to call the City Manager or I or email us, and we'll be very happy to walk through any of these, any of these details for you. So with that, I'll just move ahead with the presentation. Again, we've, we've already covered some of this, we're going to just walk through this fairly quickly, talk a little bit about, revisit the strategies and goals and, and the process from here on out. And we're going to dive just a little bit deeper into, into the numbers that we presented last time. Several iterations of the budget have been in place since last time, and so there's some slight changes in the numbers, but overall, we're still at the same levy amount. The other thing that I wanted to mention with regard to strategic processes, we talked a little bit about service level changes and how that should happen. I just want to point out again that throughout the year, one of the, one of the good things about having a City Manager form of government is that this is a continuous process, and the City Manager works on this year-round as the opportunity presents itself. I can think of many, many cases where jobs have been reclassified or restructured, or the department has been restructured throughout the year, so that is a continuous process. But it also can take place at the City Council Strategic Planning Session or at any of the departmental presentations, and I would encourage that. We're getting a little far along in the budget to really make a lot of structural changes, but I would encourage that as we move into our next strategic planning session, if, if you have concerns, you know, that we walk through a little bit more strategic approach in talking about service level changes. So you all know that we had some significant challenges this year, which ultimately led us to a 5% proposed levy increase. As hard as we worked to keep it at a 3% or somewhere in that area, it just was not possible this year, or at least it would have set us up for a more difficult challenge next year, in which you may not be ready to handle that next year. Again, over $100,000 extra in increased workers' compensation premiums, 3% general wage adjustments, we talked about, wages being 75% or 77% of the general fund levy, so it makes it very difficult to, you know, certainly be under 3. PERA increases in police and fire were over 50,000. Police officers in dispatching contract with the county was over 60,000 in addition. And a huge problem that we will be fixing with this budget is the recreation levy deficit. That is $200,000 just to fix a portion of that structure. It doesn't wipe away the deficit in the fund, but that's, we'll talk about that on a different level, but, you know, that was 1% in itself. And keeping in mind that one of our main priorities was, is debt reduction, so there are many different ways that, you know, following tradition, that we can balance the budget, doing things that may not be necessarily healthy for the rest of the city funds, for instance, leaning too hard on the utility funds, or running things through debt and charging them off through internal charges. We've made a commitment not to do that, so it does, you know, it does show up when it's time to set the levy, because we're not hiding anything, you know, in debt or in, or rating utility funds. As this timeline moves along, we still have one more workshop to get through, plus, plus you also have a chance prior to the September 9th adoption for some workshop time as well. At that point, we will begin processing all of these numbers, and the final budget would be adopted on December 10th. Also wanted to point out, there are 90 different funds, but we are mostly talking about the general fund. So all of these funds have a tendency to interrelate, there are transfers in and out, and it can be very complicated. Another thing I may point out is that a year or two ago, we had 108 funds, so we are continuing to find ways to eliminate the deficit funds, with the elimination of the recreation deficit that we're going to be proposing soon. That is the last fund that has a problem. So I assure you, we're in, moving in the right direction, and more efficient processes will result from streamlining these funds, and we typically have over double what other cities our size have. So we're finding different ways to close off the deficit funds and streamline the rest of the accounting system. Again, the property tax levy that we're proposing is a 5% increase, that's $1.1 million. We know that's a lot of money, but it will set us up, I think, for success next year, and will take care of some significant problems that may be difficult if we kick the can down the road any longer. It looks, the general fund looks a little more significant than it is. Keep in mind that we're moving that recreation fund levy into the general fund, so you'll see negative 2,000, so a decrease in the recreation fund, and then you'll, that 2,000, 200,000 gets picked up in the general fund. So just some accounting things that make this a little bit more complicated to read this year. Another thing I want to point out with this is that when we, we saw a reduction in debt service payments this year, debt service levy went down by 263,000. We turned that right around and put that into the capital project funds, meaning a building fund and a few other project funds that we have, some vehicle funds, and the EDA fund. So whenever we see the debt levy go down, we are moving that capacity over to our capital project fund so that we don't have to borrow for the next roof replacement for the, you know, the next vehicle or the next piece of equipment. That's all part of the debt reduction strategy. Sorry, I moved a little too fast on that. The only point I would make on this slide is, again, about 75% of what we're talking about is the general fund and about 22% the debt service funds. The numbers are just slightly different this year because of moving that recreation levy. So primarily, we are talking about the general fund. What changed in the tax levy? Well, a lot of things changed in the budget, but when it really comes down to the levy, that $1.1 million, just very, very high level, and again, you know, been through several iterations. The general fund payroll adjustments, that I've lumped everything together in this presentation, that includes the workers' comp adjustments, the 3%, the para increases, all of those things that we talked about earlier. That's almost a million dollars in itself. Correcting the structural deficit in the recreation levy, that is a huge win in this year's budget, you know, accomplishing that. I realize it added a percent to the budget, but I promise you that I think it's the best thing to do. A number of other things, increase in the capital improvement funds, that's offset by the debt service reduction, we just talked about that. And we will not be levying the fund balance levy of $250,000 this year because we are getting a one-time payment from the state of Minnesota, but we will, of $325,000 or $350,000, but we will have to reinstate that next year. So a couple of things, you know, that we're, we will be challenged with right off the get-go next year, but nothing that we probably can't handle within 3%. Now, I'm knocking on wood while I'm saying that because we don't know what's going to happen, but. So overall, the general fund expenditures increased by 10%, but keep in mind that the park and recreation levy is kind of skewing things because the budget was a $750,000 budget, and it's moved back into the general fund, so it's, it skews things just a little bit. Most of the other departmental increases are all related to increases in workers' comp or other contractual obligations that we talked about earlier. Again, all laid out in detail in this narrative that's included in the packet. As you can see, the expenditures in the general fund increased 2 million. About 750,000 of that was moving the recreation expenditures into the general fund. The revenues were also moved into the general fund to offset. The point of this side is that property taxes make up about 75% of the general fund revenue, so it does make it very difficult to, to reduce the levy when it is the main revenue source and, and the other sources really don't come close. Intergovernmental revenue is 6.6%, and our own charges and fees are 7.5%. So again, it's, it's very reliant on the general fund for tax levy. Expenditures, the largest expenditure is public safety, that's police and fire. Public works is at 18%. Parks and Rec at 5.6, so, you know, largely public works and public safety, that's, that's kind of what, what cities do, so that's what we would expect. Another thing to point out is, again, 76% of the general fund expenditures are wages, so, and, and 20% is contracted services, so in talking about making reductions, we will be talking about making service level changes. It's not that we can't do that, it does help if we start that process much earlier. Budgeted full-time employees, we're seeing a little bit of an uptick because we're adding two rental housing officers, and there's a police officer. We added two police officers over two years, so we started them in the half, in the middle of the year last year, and so then that added one FTE this year. So we did that over two years to, to make it affordable. We do not, at this point, have the new rental police officer in, in the budget. Well, it is, I guess, for one-tenth of the year, but not the full year. The tax levy history, even though 5% is, is a little hard to take, the average increase over the past eight years is slightly over 3. We hope to be back to 3% next year. As you know, we had some significant problems to solve this year. A couple of the other years that were up around 4% and 5%, we had fund balance problems that we had to solve in those years, and some of those resulted from those zeros that, that came before that, from those 0% levy increases. Fund balance is something that I'm very transparent about, the way that I budget for it, is I budget specifically for an increase in fund balance. I budget revenues accurately and, and expenditures accurately rather than overestimating expenditures and over, underestimating revenues. I budget accurately and budget for a transparent fund balance increase, which was necessary in those years. So very quickly, see if I'm running on time here. For the, again, for those of you on packet page 72, for those of you that want to look at the actual table, the 2017 state auditor information is now available. And we looked at 2016 last year, so this, this gives you a little bit of an idea. This is governmental funds, so it excludes any enterprise funds like sewer and water and other utilities, in our case, also ambulance. So what this tells you is that Maplewood is about average for this population group. There's probably 20% above and 20% below that we're capturing here, simply because of the, the small size of the group. About the same, you know, we're right, right in the middle of the pack for taxable tax capacity. Our tax levy is 106.7% of the average of this group, and you'll, you'll find out as you move through the columns that it is related to the amount of debt service that the city has. So the current expenditures, meaning everything that would be an operating expenditure, not including any capital expenditures, Maplewood is about 81% of the average of this group in what is expended in governmental funds. Capital outlay considerably lower, only 40%, but debt service considerably higher, 246%. That is down from over 300 in the year before, and keep in mind that these are 2017 numbers, so we keep looking a little bit better as we're, you know, getting that debt down. Overall total, adding the capital and the debt, still only about 90% of the average. So I, I feel like Maplewood is fairly efficient in, in how we utilize those tax dollars. Again, we know that the city has a lot of debt. The outstanding bonding debt is 157% of the average of this group. Again, that's ticked down a little bit from last year. The debt per capita at 1633, you know, our goal is to get that under 1,000, which is about the average of this group. So those are just some of the things that, some of the statistics that you can utilize to give you some sort of framework for how we're operating in Maplewood. A little bit of talk about fund balance. With this budget, you will notice that the, the projected 2020 budget will bring us right down to the bare minimum of the 41.67% is what the minimum is. It'll bring us right down there, so we will need to bring that fund balance levy back up next year. And the reason for that is because the, the general fund is assuming the recreation fund expenditures, so therefore, a fund balance requirement of 41% is, is required. So this is something that we'll have to be watching to make sure that we keep that fund balance where it needs to be, but I just wanted to walk through this just to kind of illustrate sometimes how sleeping dogs can lie. So we know that we have a cash deficit in the recreation fund of over $300,000. It's projected to be closer to 400 by the end of the year. We're not fixing that with this budget, we have some other ideas about that that we can talk to you about, but we are fixing the levy deficit of 150,000 plus 50,000 of the reserve requirements. So what happened with the recreation fund is, is for whatever the reason, it was established in a fund of its own, but no reserve was placed in the fund. So it was always in the red because the revenues never exceeded the expenditures or even came close. So it was always a deficit balance. After working through a couple of years, looking at different models, and finally deciding to stay with the same type of recreation model, we need to fix the problem, you know, that it's the elephant in the corner that's been standing there. It's really just, you know, we've talked about the 200,000 that we're adding to the, to the levy to fix the levy deficit because we weren't levying enough. We also have that cash deficit that's, that's accumulated over the last several years, and the reserve requirements that need to be built into the fund balance that were never there, so it's really a bigger problem than what it sounds like when you add it all up. We're really looking at about an $850,000 problem. We do have a plan in place to get there, but again, this is a one-time thing that should not happen again, at least on my watch, but it, it will, it will work itself out eventually, but we will need to watch that fund balance. So this budget, again, as I said, it did not fund a full year for the rental housing police officer. That will be our first challenge, is to get that entire year budgeted for that rental officer and some other administration in the fire department. We still would like to move part of the communications payroll to the general fund, we've talked about that for several We've talked about that for several years. It won't fund the, well, the current deficit of 300,000, but projected deficit of 400,000 in the recreation fund. But we do have some other ideas that we will talk about with that with you. We will have to reinstate the reserve levy that is not in place this year because of the one-time payment. So, a number of things. There's always additional capital funds that are needed. We're not fully funding or capital replacement. We will probably be looking at doing a lease for the next ladder truck that we purchased because we don't have enough in reserves to purchase that big of an item. So, we're working on those things along with an additional EDA levy. These are all the things that are going to be carried over into next year. At the next meeting, we'll be reviewing financial policies, including the debt policies, and again, review the budget and the levy. We will have information from the county, so I will have tax impact figures. I will be able to tell you more exact figures of how much this will impact the property taxes. I won't be surprised to see 10% based on the preliminary numbers. But, again, that has more to do with the inflation on the homes than it does the city's levy. But I will have that information for you. So, again, any questions, I would be happy to take, and any concerns about the target tax levy increase, we would hope to hear about that now or about any of the policy decisions on the unfunded items. We would like to hear that as soon as possible so that we could react. So, I'd be happy to take any questions or go over any slides that...
Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Acting Mayor. I have a question on the EDA levy. So, we'll be putting no additional funds into the EDA levy, into the EDA through this current levy plan, is that correct?
Mayor and council, last year, the city levied $100,000, and this year, it's $120,000, so it's $20,000 more. But we're also looking at a new structure for the EDA in which the EDA could levy its own taxes?
So, the $100,000 in your report, it was incremental to the 120?
Yes.
That we had planned?
Yes.
So, we will still be putting the 120 in there?
That's correct.
Okay. City Manager Coleman, are there any, is there risk to that from your perspective as far as projects that we were hoping to do, that we'd have to put off? Or is there anything, any impact you can see to...
Mayor and council, I might also mention that there's $100,000 of local government aid that we're putting into that fund this year that was scheduled?
Oh, great.
So, if that helps you answer your question.
I can try to answer your question. For the most part, you know, our hands are somewhat tied because we don't have a big pot of money. We spent most of the money that we had accumulated on acquiring the last three parcels. But we are also hoping that through our redevelopment efforts, we'll have a partnership with a developer who, if we do TIF or do some other things, won't affect that fund. So, that's really the secret sauce, is finding a developer who wants to come in and perhaps we can use TIF to help demolish the structures or do any cleanup that's needed. So, that's really what we're looking at. But our hands are slightly tied because we don't have just a checkbook to go out and buy a parcel when it comes up. So, we really have to be really thoughtful about how we target the next parcel and how those funds are used. But, yeah, we're running a little, we're not really where we'd like to be, but we're going to try to really leverage what we have.
Great, thank you.
Councilmember Knutson.
Thank you, Acting Mayor. Ellie, just some general questions. You talked about the increase having something to do with service level changes. Just generally speaking, how much of the increase is due to service level changes?
So, Mayor and council, thank you for that question. We really didn't have a lot of service level changes that impacted the budget. We definitely added rental housing, which is a service level increase. But part of what I missed discussing on my slide is that we made sure that we structured that program so that the fees paid for the expenses, so...
And I'm looking, you know, just at the trajectory of the levy increases going back, well, you listed seven years there. On average, it's, you know, under three is what I guess our target. And as you're describing some of the things we need to do, it looks like a lot of catch-up, things that otherwise, you know, we would have done two years ago and maybe made that a little bit more. But we're kind of doing some catch-up. Plus, it looks to me, when you have a lot of debt, you know, the first dollar goes to debt service and the rest is discretion. So, I'm just making observations in my onboard.
Yeah, Mayor and council, that's exactly right. A lot of our difficulties are because we are trying very hard to stick to the council's priority of debt reduction. And it can be very easy to slide some of these expenditures off onto debt or lean heavily on utility funds, and then there's not money in the utility funds to pay for the infrastructure. So, we're planning a little more thoughtfully and making 10-year plans on all of these funds, particularly utility funds. But that does, you know, it does explain why it may have been easier at times to balance a budget with a 0% or a 2% or 4%. We're trying to be very thoughtful and transparent about it.
City Manager Coleman.
Yeah, I failed to mention when I was responding to Councilmember Smith about the CIP. The CIP also has funds allocated to acquisitions of parcels. I don't remember what the number is for next year, but it's a substantial amount of money. Do you know what that number is, Ellie? I don't remember off the top of my head.
For, to be purchasing land?
Yeah.
Through the, yeah, through the EDA fund, there's a couple of hundred thousand dollars that...
Isn't there something else allocated through the CIP to go towards that fund as well?
In the CIP, there is, but the funding source is local government aid for this year. We added local government aid and then tax levy as well.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
And I may have misunderstood Mr. Knutson's question as well. With the service level changes, I talked about how they were done throughout the year, so, and you maybe would be wanting to answer that question?
About the service levels that we've talked about or generally?
The different types of service level changes that...
Yeah, so, you know, we're continually looking for ways to improve our efficiencies. And that was one of the things that we, I think, when I started, we started kind of going through each of the departments, and that resulted in us doing the partnership with the Y on the MCC. As you know, this year, we looked at possibly partnering with the Y again on the nature center and park and recreation programs, and that just didn't really, we just didn't feel that that was going to get us to where we wanted to be. But we do continually look at that. I think the biggest considerations we've had this year is making sure that the public safety staff is at the levels that they need to be, and you're seeing that in the budget reflections. You also see that we didn't quite get where we wanted to get with the rental licensing program because we were trying to keep it be revenue neutral. And so, but we are continually, every time we have a staff person leave, we look at that position and does it make sense? But our goal is to provide the best amount of service that we can. So, we, this is a constant process. When the budget gets done, we look at every position and see, does this, do we need this position? Do we need more of this position? You'll see we added a part-time staff in the DMV because they're so busy all the time. So, we really are constantly balancing service needs versus what we can afford in terms of staffing. And I don't know if I answered your question completely either, but it is a continual process. It's one that we are always looking at with every hire. Ellie signs off on the positions as well. She looks at it from a budget perspective. So, we really do try to make sure that we're balancing what we need to provide service versus the expenditures required for that.
Thank you. Just, may I?
Can I?
Just, I spend a lot of time, you know, work in hospital industry, and I always continue to measure productivity. So, I'm trying to connect here. When I looked at the metrics that each department has, I was impressed with all those metrics. And I look at the weekly report on EMS and fire calls, and the trajectory is going this way, and my guess, at some point in time, you know, you get exceptional productivity because you just can't hire people fast enough. So, I, you know, just new to all this, I recognize that there's a set of metrics, some expectations that at some point, you know, you just can't, you know, squeeze any more productivity out of people. And so, we appreciate that, the fact that everything is measured.
Yeah.
And you look carefully at the billets of employees or whatever you call that kind of, and work on it. So, I appreciate that.
City Manager Coleman.
Yeah, just one other comment. One of the things that we're, that I'm working on now is with the park and rec department staff and the nature center staff and Mr. Love to challenge the staff to look at our fee structure for our park and rec programming and what we're doing at the nature center because I think that has never been done, not that I've been aware of since I've been here. And I think that that's an area that we need to take a look at and really see if I challenge them to come up with $50,000 worth of new revenue this year or for next year. And so, I know Mr. Sharon has actually been working with them to look at getting donations, maybe from, Councilmember Junen and I talked about this today, about looking to see if we could get some of our car dealerships to contribute to a van for the nature center because that's what they need to do. They need to be out on the road because we can't take big classrooms in our, in our nature centers. So, we're trying to adapt and look at how we can provide better service and look for partners in the community. And Joe's pretty connected with our folks out there. And so, we're really putting on our thinking cap. So, this next few months, we'll be focusing kind of on how can we look at revenue for next year for that department.
Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Acting Mayor. And this can be for Ms. Paul Sutter, Ms. Coleman. I did read, there was a story in the paper about three weeks ago about four metro suburbs that are enacting sales taxes. And, you know, we don't have a ton of levers to pull when it comes to revenue. And I do understand that this, that would be a pretty significant and drastic move for us. However, you know, the flip side of it is we are a retail center. We do have a lot of commerce going on with folks from outside of Maplewood, and that retail drives costs for us in public safety and roads and other things. Interesting, kind of, what is the buzz with your colleagues from other cities and kind of what are your thoughts on, is that something that we should maybe start talking to our legislators about at some point?
I do believe that requires special legislation.
It does.
I guess I would be curious to know how the other cities did that. So, I didn't see that article. I don't know if that was on, I was on vacation, but if you want to email it to me, I'd love to see that and talk to those cities about how they got that done because it is a pretty big hurdle. It does need special legislation. I'm surprised they got it, frankly. Because I remember two years ago, Duluth tried and had a referendum and everybody supported it and the legislature wouldn't, so...
So, for reference, it's Elk River Rogers, Excelsior, and West St. Paul.
Really?
So, I can send you the article. But the article did mention that there's some rules going into it affecting next year which may make it more difficult for cities to do.
Of course.
But...
Because it was so easy before.
Right. So, anyways, but, I mean, for, for instance, West St. Paul is going to collect $20 million over 20 years, and they're dedicating it all to roads. So, I mean, I think if we had, if we had a good dedicated place to put it?
Yeah.
That was really for the, for the good of the city, whether that was roads or economic or housing development, things like that. I mean, I certainly wouldn't suggest something like that for just general funds. But if we had those specific things, I think it might be worth taking a look at and starting to talk to our legislators.
Yeah, great. Thank you.
Anyone else? Ms. Paul says, anything more?
Again, if you care to read the narrative, the nitty-gritty details are there, and feel free to give us a call if you have any questions about it. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your report. Now, we're going to the long-awaited Public Works presentation. And Mr. Love's going to be really good because he was already last time, and now he's re-prepared.
I don't know if I can live up to that kind of feeling.
Mr. Love.
Mayor and council, good evening. I apologize if my voice is a little bit rough here tonight. The allergies are getting the better part of me here, so. So, we're going to be talking about Public Works here. Just going to give you kind of a overview here. The Public Works Department is made up of seven different divisions. We have 44 benefit-earning employees. Our first group is administration. We have one Public Works Office Specialist who's overseen by Megan Genesek, and she's our administrative office supervisor. She actually oversees administration staff for Public Works, Park and Recreation, as well as community development. So, these people, these two people are really our frontline staff. Often, they are the first people that residents talk to when they call into Public Works. So, one of their main key points is customer service. They also work on permitting as well as directing questions, making sure that people are getting in touch with the right people, council preparation as well as assessment, and those are just a few of the things that they work on. In Public Works, one of the exciting things is park and recreation and park maintenance are now combined as one division under Public Works, so we're really excited about this. Overall, we have six park maintenance staff that are overseen by Scott Schultz. He's our supervisor of utility, fleet, and parks. We have five full-time and three part-time, along with many seasonal workers underneath our park and recreation manager, Adra Robbins. And, you know, our system is, as you probably know, very large. We have 36 parks, 15 preserves, as well as the nature center. And one of the interesting things that I've been learning is how much work the programming and running of the recreation program is. Overall, they manage over 100 part-time staff throughout the year. There was about 2,500 rec program participants last year, and we had about 669 permits for, paid permits for athletic fields as well as field permits, along with 250 free practice permits. So, I mean, that kind of paints a picture of the amount of work that they do running the recreation programs. The other thing that I'm really excited about is they bring community engagement to Public Works. In the past, we really haven't had a role other than supporting other community engagement efforts. They do some of our really large and important community engagements. I mean, they're all important, but some of the big ones like Fourth of July, Bike Rodeo, Touch a Truck, Summer Celebration, Movie Nights, Music at the Barn, the Boo Bash, along with, as I mentioned, supporting other departments' efforts with community outreach. So, this has been a really exciting thing to add to Public Works. It's nice to have a part of our department that really has a main focus on this. This picture here is our park and rec staff. We're out here putting up our ice rinks for the winter. So, you know, it's really exciting to get these two entities and start merging them together as a cohesive team, and that's something I'm going to be working on throughout the year. Our street and storm division, we have 10 staff. They're overseen by our street, stormwater, and facilities superintendent, Brian Nagel. As you know, one of the main things that we see during the winter is, these crews are responsible for the maintenance of our roads during the winter. We have about 135 miles of roads. They're also the same crews that are in charge of the potholes come springtime. We have 37 miles of sidewalks, 35 miles of trails, and we're, with snow and ice removal, we're doing that after the road clearing work is done. And our goal is typically have those open 48 hours after the road work is done. We also, this staff and the park maintenance staff actually helps with the sidewalk and trail removal. But the photo here shows that they do more than just roads. They also do our storm sewer. They're replacing old infrastructure here that is, this is an old metal pipe that's rusted out, and they're putting in a new plastic pipe that'll be longer-lasting. They also get some very unglamorous work. This is cleaning out the grit chamber at Wakefield Lake. This chamber catches a large amount of the sediment and debris before it washes into Wakefield Lake. So, this is just one of our many BMPs. Some are above ground, some are below ground, as in this case here. And, you know, they really do, it's messy work, it's dirty work, but it really pays off environmentally for us. Our sanitary and sewer division, we have three staff members that are overseen by Scott Schultz. They're in charge for all the maintenance activities related to our storm sewer system. This picture here is, the crews are out cleaning the sewer mains as well as televising them. This work really helps keep our system operating. Generally, you never hear about the sewer division unless something goes wrong. And so, our goal with doing this kind of work is to try to minimize the risk of that. Another kind of unsung hero of our division is our fleet. We have three mechanics, and they're also overseen by Scott Schultz. They're responsible for the entire city fleet, keeping it operating. We have over 200 vehicles and pieces of equipment that they maintain. Again, nobody really thinks about them until why, why aren't the roads being plowed? Well, two trucks are broken and we're trying to get them fixed. So, a big thank you to them for all the work that they do. They also help out, it's kind of neat, they help out with the snow plowing activities. They also get involved in our WOW events and other items like that. So, they do more than just the mechanic work, but that is really their primary thing. So they, they do more than just the mechanic work, but that is really their primary thing. Facilities, we have a number of city billing, buildings. We have three staff. They're responsible for all the maintenance activities, the daily maintenance as well as repair activities. They also help us lead our building renovation and upgrade projects. For example, we're looking at an air handling unit up on Public Works, and we're certainly having them, having a seat at the table because they bring the knowledge of how the system works and, and what it takes to maintain it. So it's nice to have those people contributing to that overall project. And again, sometimes the work, you know, you don't think of them until something goes wrong, but they, they do a lot to make sure that the facilities are in good operation and so that we can do our jobs. Okay, with engineering, I'm just going to play this little video while I talk. This is the Gladstone Savannah Phase Three. It's currently under construction. I think this video does a good capture, a good job of capturing the size and scope of these projects. This is just one half of this project. We have six staff, including myself and Assistant City Engineer John Drosh. We're both professional engineers. We have one engineer in training and four technicians. This year, we're doing three of these projects. This is kind of a neat project because as you transition here, you can see that the new road, the sidewalk, trail, and the narrower road all fits within that footprint of the old road. Capital improvement projects are one of the biggest things we do, but it's not the only thing we do. We also do development reviews, mapping, GIS, asset management, and permitting. Just kind of touch on our, we have two missions and two vision statements because we are still, a department that is still coming together. So obviously, when we look at the Public Works mission statement, it's really centered around our infrastructure, the maintenance of it, providing a high-quality experience, and again, you know, customer service. Because they, the staff out there does interact with the public quite a bit on our projects. Park and Recreation, their mission is to provide diverse recreation opportunities for people of all ages and abilities, enhance and preserve our parks, facilities, and open spaces while promoting environmental stewardship through education outreach. You know, this is really, this is where, again, I'm very excited that they're now being melded into our group because they bring a lot of different things to the table for us. Our vision, again, we want to be regional leaders in our asset management, and, you know, that allows us to make really smart decisions on how we're investing into our infrastructure and maintaining it, and, and also look to connect with our citizens through real-time problem reporting, and I'll be touching on that here in a little bit. Again, Park and Recreation, you know, they're looking to create a vibrant community, and it really, it's, it's the community. When you think of recreation programs and public outreach, it's, it's really about creating that sense of community. So just touching on some of our successes and efficiencies. The first one I like to touch on is the Wakefield Lake Building. We had our grand opening here this year. This project was led by Adra Robbins, and I think she did a tremendous job of leading this project. It was also a new stretch for her because this was the first building project she led. So I think, you know, when you look, I know you all have been there, and when you see that facility, it's, it's a really nice facility for our communities, and she did a great job. Spot paving, this is something that we're adding to our Public Works toolbox. It's something that we did this spring. Our crews are extremely excited about this because we speak about efficiencies. The spot paving, if we're able to do it early in the spring, we come in, we provide a higher level of service to our, to our residents while not having to come back and repatch that road three, four times in one year, and our crews can then go work on other items. So they're very excited about this. Tracking reported requests and concern, we're using Cartograph. I know I've spoke about Cartograph in the past. Just in, since this year, when I made this presentation, we had 986 requests logged in for, since the first of the year, of which only 29 are actually open. All the rest have been closed. Just out of curiosity, I checked before I came down, and we are now over 1,062 requests logged in since the start of the year. I think this system really speaks to the work that the staff does, all the good work they do, as well as addressing the issues that are reported. And I think this system really helps us provide those metrics that you're looking for, as well as try to prevent things slipping through the gap. Gladstone Savannah, I know I showed a video, we're not watching the video again, but, you know, I, the thing with this project was, that was a really big success, was partnerships. We, as you know, we partnered with Ramsey Washington Metro Watershed District to address a number of issues in this neighborhood. They contributed over a million dollars to the project. We also were able to get a grant through MINDOT. So roughly over two-fifths of the project was funded through grants, and I think this is an excellent example of government agencies working together to kind of have one good solution to a number of problems. Snow and ice removal, if you remember the last two months of the winter, it was a big challenge. It seemed to snow every other day, and I just wanted to put this in here because I think our crews did a really great job when you think about 10 people and 135 miles of road. EAB removal, prior to those two months of snow, our crews were able to remove about 160 trees. This again speaks to efficiency. You know, we have our staff, we have the staff doing the work. Most of those trees were taken down by Public Works staff, and that saves a lot of money compared to hiring that out for contract work. Our facility staff led a number of light conversion to LED. This is a picture of our parking lot taken in the winter after the new LED lights. We also did interior projects such as the Public Works garage, and all this speaks, again, to that, you know, it's that long-term savings of power and, and long-term savings on maintenance of, of the lighting system. With safety, our HR department met with representatives from the League of Minnesota City's Work Comp Division, and they provided us a look back at our claims over the past few years. And one of the things they stated was that generally Public Works employees have a high number of comp claims. But thanks to the efforts of our Safety Committee and our Health and Wellness Program, as well as employees buying into these efforts, he believes that these are contributing factors to the low Public Works claims over the, the number of claims over the last few years. This is in thanks, again, to the Public Works employees and supervisors who make, you know, accident injury reduction efforts a priority. So we do want all our crews to come back whole and safe. And lastly, support other divisions and departments. This is planting in front of City Hall, work is being done, and you have Park and Rec staff there, and you also have our Sewer Department staff there. So as Public Works, even though we're in these different divisions, a lot of times as projects come up, we're supporting our other projects, but we're also supporting other divisions if they have something that they need our help with. So challenges, we do have some. Storm sewer repairs, we were looking at how do we shift some additional time to invest into our storm sewer infrastructure? Again, these are the same crews that are doing the pavement work, so that's one of our challenges as, as our system continues to age, make sure we're devoting enough time to it. Meeting our goals for trails and sidewalks, we know that the trail and sidewalk infrastructure is just going to continue to grow. It's a, it's a priority for the residents, and we have a number of ideas on how to handle this, including maybe eventually get, if we get to the point, creating a tiered system with our priorities around schools and, and hospitals and medical transportation facilities. So, you know, we'll, we're currently meeting our goal, but as we get closer to the knot, then we'll start looking at implementing some of those strategies. Spring pothole repairs, that is going to be something that is going to be a challenge for a number of years, but we are taking some steps, not only with the spot paving, but also looking at maybe working with our Communications Department to help provide some information to residents about how we approach spring pothole patching so that they at least understand what we're trying to do out there. Obviously, the city has a number of resource, or a number of assets, you know, whether it be roads or utilities, parks, playgrounds, so obviously balancing need and available resources is always a challenge. Implementing new training, implementing and training of new software, we're working on our Cartograph as well as a new permitting program that they're, they're developing right now. That, so that's always a challenge. Streamlining communication between Public Works divisions with all these different divisions, working all these, on these different items, making sure the information is getting to the right people is a challenge, and we've been using Cartograph. I think that, that one screenshot I had kind of speaks to that, as well as document and permit management. That's, you know, there's just the sheer volume. It's always a challenge to do that. So lastly, our goals, our number one goal is to provide great customer service and response time, and we now have some metrics that we can look at. How long are we taking to get to these issues? Are we closing them out? So we're moving to more of a metrics-driven approach to that. Implementing a resident report, reporting portal. So what that is, I'm working with Michael Folds in the ID Department at looking at options for creating a portal where residents can report an issue through an app, and that app would then route it right to the right people. Kind of make it more efficient, give residents another ability to communicate with us and get that information to the right people. Complete springtime spot paving again, again, I put this in there because our crews really, really liked being able to do this, and they got great feedback. They said the biggest trouble that they had when doing it was people coming out and thanking them for doing it. So, you know, that, that, those are good problems to have. We want to continue to invest in our employees. We also want to continue to do as much preventive maintenance as possible. Obviously, we'll always be in this balance of reactive and preventative, but we want to, we want to continue to stress that preventative. Implementing our new, the new permitting software, I know there's a number of departments that are working on that, and Public Works is, is in there with that. And lastly, the completion of the implementation of Cartograph. This is one that I've been working on, and we're now working on our very last asset from the list of assets, and that's facilities. So I'm hoping to have that completed here this year. And with that, available for any questions.
Thank you for the report, Steve.
Yep.
And now we're on to the.
Public Safety.
Public Safety. Yada, 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 yada. Public Safety Director, Nidalee.
Acting Mayor, members of the council, thank you for the opportunity to go through a couple of quick slides here in Public Safety. I was told there was 40. I counted, there's 31. Some of those were pictures, so.
Okay.
Tonight, we're going to talk a little bit about Public Safety Collaboration, which I think really has been part of the success story for your Public Safety Department. And then the, an update from the Police Department on initiatives and highlights, the same from the Fire Department, and then the two chiefs are here to present that, and then we will stand for questions if you have them. So again, Public Safety Collaboration really has been the product of what we're doing in the last couple of years, and it really, I think, has kind of hit the next level. So in outreach, and I'll be talking a little bit about our outreach, we are, we're outreaching to different groups, whether they be religious groups, whether they be the elderly, whether they be some of the groups that have been a little tougher for us to reach, so diverse communities, communities of color, some of our apartment communities and trailer home communities. Training, another great thing that we've been doing together. In fact, unfortunately, in this last week, we had a very traumatic shooting, and the training that the police officers used on scene has been widely credited, in addition to our paramedics for being able to save a life where that might not have happened otherwise. But really, it's, again, our EMS staff working with our Police Department to get our officers back up to speed, to stop the bleeding, to save that life, to, to utilize a defibrillator, and really helping to get us to the next level. We continue to do a lot with fitness, wellness, and mental health of our first responders. We have continued the mental health check-in program, making sure that our first responders who are exposed to a variety of different traumas are, are doing well psychologically. The goal being that we want them to enter their career field. We want them to leave 25 or 30 years later, still being resilient, still being mentally well and strong. All right, here's just a couple of photographs of some of the things that we've been doing. All right, so one of the things I wanted to talk about was really outreach. And so we started when I got here the first year with doing some coffee with the cop and some of those kind of things that I call the quick hitters. You're, you're trying to meet people in the community, but it's really gone to the next level. So we're doing pretty much a weekly outreach event, and I can't talk enough about the great things that we're doing in Public Safety, but also working with Public Works who's showing up, and they're bringing a plow truck for kind of a mini Touch a Truck type of event. We've got recreation that's coming, and they're doing some things with the youth there. At the Rolling Hills, we had a large Hispanic population, and so we brought the Mexican consulate. We brought people that had different language abilities. We've got folks that are coming from the census because we want to make sure that everyone in our community is getting counted. We've got the YMCA that's coming out to do a little bit with, with, you know, their programs and their programming. We've had the Metro Transit come out, and Transit Police are coming out, but they're also bringing some people that are talking to some of our communities about free and reduced transportation for those that have needs that need transportation and don't have a different way to, to access it. So really, reaching out and building some relationships with some folks that we traditionally have not been able to meet in a more positive space. Another example I'd like to highlight, and again, we've got lots of things that we're doing in Public Safety, but this is the second year of our bicycle giveaway. So to remind the council, every year, the Police Department takes in probably hundreds of bicycles. Some really are not very functional by the time that we get to them. Some are actually in pretty good shape. They might have been taken from someone's backyard or, or stooped and ridden around and then kind of ditched. And so we worked with a bike shop, we worked with Public Works who helped us to kind of tune these up, and then we worked with our schools to see who are these kids as we're going into summer could utilize a bicycle. And then we went, met with them. We have Public Works staff who made sure that the bikes were properly adjusted. Our firefighter paramedics made sure that each child was properly fitted with a bicycle helmet, and just another great way that we can outreach to our youth and really build those relationships. I'd also like to talk a little bit about the Public Safety Roadshow for seniors, so kind of talking about the things that we're doing together. We know that we have a variety of senior citizens in our community, and we went to the places where they meet and gather. So whether that was a senior assisted home, whether that was at the YMCA or somewhere else, we did 22 different presentations, and after they did the first one or two, they really kind of fell into that rhythm, right? They knew the bins that they had to bring with some giveaway stuff, they kind of knew, you know, what they were going to be talking about. So, you know, some of it was building relationships, but really, there's a lot of great interest topics about slip and fall prevention, about scams that affect our senior citizens and how to not be a victim of those, about things like financial exploitation, which unfortunately continues to happen in today's world. So through all of those events, which had a variety of Public Safety staff, we were able to reach out and build relationships and give information to about 400 people. So I would say that for a first-year initiative, you know, with the feedback that we got, the number of people that we were able to reach out to was really a great success for us. Now, the most recent thing is that we've been working on an initiative, we're going to be starting with Weaver Elementary School, and we're going to be bringing in the Big Brothers Big Sisters program. So essentially, this is city staff, many of whom are police and firefighters, but there is other city staff as well who will be meeting with a child in need of a mentor. A lot of these children at Weaver come from communities that are not very affluent, and they are diverse communities, and it's a great opportunity for our staff to get to know the kids and the folks in our community, but also to build that relationship and kind of help that child in their journey by coming alongside of them once a week. We were able to get this funded through a pass-through grant from the NFL. So the NFL has money that they are using to try and build relationships with first responders and the people that they serve, and the Big Brothers Big Sisters organization, which has gone all-in on this and will be, I'm sure, dedicating a lot of staff time and resources to make this happen. So we're excited about that. We had initially told the Big Brothers Big Sisters folks that we thought we could get at least 10 to 15 mentors. At last count, we have 29 signed up. They've gone through the screening, they're getting some training, we should be ready to roll in this fall, and we're really excited about that program. Talked a little bit about Public Safety Training the last time we were here, and that's a little bit of a review, so we'll kind of skip over that in the interest of time. One of the last things I'd like to talk about is our Public Safety Community Paramedic and Police Outreach Team for Mental Health. We've overcome some obstacles in this, and I'm very proud of the way that this has happened. One of the things that we had to talk about was, you know, sharing information, because the police can share information with the Fire Department, but there's some HIPAA issues since the Fire Department's a HIPAA-covered entity. And so we had to kind of work on some of those things, but they've already demonstrated some success with some of the folks in our community that have serious and persistent mental health issues, whether that means that we're connecting with social workers, whether they have a caseworker, whether that's working with family, just to make sure that these folks in our community are not forgotten about, they do not slip through the cracks. We've kept our caseload relatively small so that we could continue to focus and really build out the program, which did result in what I thought was a very positive article in the Star Tribune. very positive article in the Star Tribune about our community. With that, we will flip to the police department. So, Maplewood Police Department is currently back up to 54 officers, which was the same number that we had in 2012. We are very grateful to the council for allowing us to go back to that level. Last year, we handled about 34,000 incidents, so it's a busy police department. It's not unusual for our officers to kind of go call-to-call, but they pride themselves in getting to priority calls in a very responsive and quick way. In addition to our patrol division, we currently have two K-9s. You will be meeting one of our new K-9s tonight during the council presentation. We have four investigators and a school resource officer. We are part of a Ramsey County team for special operations or otherwise known as SWAT, as are firefighter medics who serve as SWAT medics. We've had a retail crime officer that's down from two positions that works primarily with our business community. So, they're out really not just taking shoplifting calls or forgery calls, but really trying to be more proactive in helping them to target hardened and do different things in our community. We have a street crimes unit that works on quality of life, crime trends, prolific offenders. So, we do daily crime mapping and incident analysis. When we see the cars being broken into in an area of town, it's a flexible resource, they're not trying to do things between calls. We take that team of officers and they go to that neighborhood and try and get on the issues before they become a bigger community concern. Sometimes people say that those are quality of life issues, but I don't think you view it that way if it was your car that was broken into or something that was stolen from your yard. So, we're trying to have a much more responsive and proactive unit doing that. It says eight FTEs of support staff. I actually, I don't think that's true because all of our CSOs are part-time. But, we do have three records staff, we have a crime analyst, and then we have a person that supervises the property room for us. So, that's kind of the organizational chart of the police department. So, some of the things that we're involved in in 2019, strategic planning for focused activity and outcomes. This is our second year of strategic planning. For the council that has not seen our strategic plan in the past, for transparency's sake, we do put it on our website. It is pages long and it's very specific as to exactly what it is that we're trying to accomplish, who's responsible for that particular initiative. We then look at our strategic plan quarterly. We sit down with a team of people, we look at every strategy, we look at every outcome that we were supposed to have achieved, and, you know, we, we check in. So, it isn't that, let's do this once a year and then we'll check in again next year. We evaluate that quarterly to make sure that we are on track. Maybe if there's something that's not on track, is it because we're not at that time of year yet? Did the situation change? Do we need to apply more resources towards it? Or kind of what's going on? Recruiting and retaining a talented workforce that reflects our community, I've got a different slide on that, so I'll kind of just brush by that for a second. Connecting and building partnerships with our community. I have to say again, I'm very proud of, of the work that's been done in this last year or two, from a police department that was doing some stuff at schools and maybe a couple of one-offs at another city event to really being out and getting to know our community and letting our community know that we're here to serve them and we value those relationships. Focus crime analysis and reduction. So, two years ago, there was really no crime analysis that was occurring on a daily, weekly, or monthly basis. Now, we not only do that, that daily and weekly crime analysis, but that analysis turns into actionable items, actionable intelligence, actionable, you know, things for our team. So, whether it's the investigations team, the street crimes team, it's not just looking at data, it's translating data that we're seeing in the city to action. So, that when our staff goes to roll call every day, they, they're told in specific terms, here's what's going on in the last day, here's the people that have been responsible for some of these things, and here's what you need to be doing out there to make sure that we're effective. That kind of ties into the next one, which is problem solving. So, whether it's issues at a particular store that's seeing shoplifting, whether it's a place like U-Haul where vehicles are being stolen because people haven't obtained access to keys, our officers are not just going to locations to take calls anymore, our officers are going to locations to figure out how we can help community to solve problems. All right, so I'm going to skip over the evolution of the strategic plan, except to say that last year, the department came up with a strategic plan. This year, they were much more intentional about going out and making sure that we were talking to elected officials, we were talking to our citizens, we were talking to people in our police advisory commission, we were talking to people in the school district, understanding that we need community input for the things that we want and need to do in our city. All right, so, one of the things I think that we are pretty proud of in this last year is we've put a lot of time and energy into making sure that we are finding the best possible police officers for the city of Maplewood, whether that means going to the academies, whether that means utilizing initiatives like the Pathways to Law Enforcement Program. We are doing a great job of what I like to call building the bench, bringing in part-time community service officers, and then training them up, encultivating them into the law enforcement type of family. And nine of our last 13 police officers have been that non-traditional, so either women or people of color, people that are bringing new skills, new abilities, whether that be language abilities, cultural skills. And although it's been time and labor intensive, I think that we've really done a great job of finding some new people from Maplewood. Talked a little bit about this, the two new patrol lieutenants who were sworn in with this council just a couple of months ago, their, their primary concern is to work with sergeants and officers to make sure that we're, we're out there solving problems utilizing that data like we talked about previously. Looks like the, the dog has arrived. So, some current challenges for the MPD, we've had some issues with staffing. I think right now, we've got five people in training, and so we've had to pull back units like our street crimes unit to just staff the street. That's what we do on that day-to-day basis. We're continuing to push community outreach and focus problem solving as cultural norms, not just something that you do from time to time, but this is who we are and this is the things that we do in our community. We continue to see increasing calls. So, since 2012, we've increased about 30% of calls for service. So, our officers are busy, and yet we're at about the same staffing level that we were in 2012. We're continuing to see some challenging environment for recruiting and report building. There's a lot of conversations happening about police and community relationships and with different communities. Another thing that we're kind of dealing with is family leave and military leave. So, we currently have three people that are active in the military, some leave for weeks, if not months at a time. And now, we have many more women of childbearing age that are coming into the workforce, but we also have men who, unlike years ago, are taking, you know, 12 weeks off. And so, that has, you know, at times kind of affected our patrol force. Efficiencies, since I got here, we've eliminated several contracts that we've had for services that were underutilized. Some have been tens of thousands of dollars. We continue to deploy resources in a targeted fashion. Instead of just having people drive around, they're told where to go and what we expect them to do, what's going on there. We've started to charge for services that were not outreach-related. So, when the police or fire go to an event and it's outreach-related, we don't charge for that, but where we're there essentially for security purposes, we're now billing that back. We looked at our fleet, and next year, we will be eliminating two marked patrol cars and two unmarked patrol cars. I just, quite frankly, thought we had too many cars, and we were keeping them a little bit too long. So, we kind of did the data analysis, how many miles, what types of repairs, and we decided that we could do just as well with fewer. And right now, we're working on a county-wide crime scene team, so really trying to reach out to other agencies to see what can we do as a county to do more in the way of, you know, if you've got some sort of a scene, you need fiber analysis and you need DNA, and, and the whole thing has gotten much more technical, and it's gotten to the point where it probably doesn't make sense for us as an agency to continue to have people at that level of training, expertise, and equipment. So, really trying to see where can we continue to partner with others to do some of those things. With that, I'll turn it over to the fire chiefs.
Thank you, Chief. Mayor and council, good evening. Want to start out tonight and just talk real quickly about a few things. So, we're really excited, as you can see, 24 firefighters, three captains, and three chiefs. This is the first time in over two years we have finally, our last hire is started today. So, absolutely. So, we're at our 24 as you, as we have listed up there. Staff are guided by our strategic plan that we started on last year, implemented, finished, and we'll talk a little bit more about that, which we have going this year. As always, we're over 6,000-plus calls for emergencies, and that's continuing to grow each year. We have assignments that go side-by-side, which include our SWAT medic program, we're part of the Ramsey County team, and then our community paramedic program, and then our inspections and investigators that we go along with it. Okay, next you'll see here is just a real quick overview of our, of our org chart that we currently have, and as you can see, every one is listed there as we have it down the line. So, our majority, in 2019, I merit our, our major objectives and goals. First one was strategic planning, activities, and outcomes. We continue to collaborate with community partners, Red Cross, XL, the PD. We synergize together in many cases, I jumped ahead here. We synergize together in many cases to make the programs better, to work closely together, and it's gone very, very well for us. Let me see if I know how to get this backwards. Nope. There we are. I'm not touching it. All right, employee, employee wellness, it's a positive. We're creating a positive work culture with that. We're getting everyone actively involved. We're very happy that we have well over 90-some percent of all of our firefighters are actively involved and participate in our wellness program that we have. Supervise and include work culture, a superior target communication, enhancing social media through our footprint, working with the communication department for internal and external communication as effectively as we possibly can give that. Community risk reduction, our community risk reduction activities include high-risk discharged folks from the hospital. What we do is after they're discharged, we go out and we visit them for up to four weeks. We make sure that their meds they're taking, we're sure they're taking the proper meds. If there's any types of allergies or any other restrictions, we meet with doctors, talk to doctors, and get those things changed. So, that our, our goal for this is, is they don't have to go back into the hospital or the emergency room. Targeted community outreach, our target community outreach is we do as much as we can. As, as you well know, we participate in all the park and recreation programs as well as others to get out there to target our community, to get them to know who we are and work with them closer within our community. Data-driven emergency responses, what we do is on a weekly, monthly, and a quarterly basis, we analyze the data that we have to determine, are we still providing the best possible services during the best, the most active time during the day, and at the same time then, are we getting the best bang for our buck on what we provide them? So, it's a three-way street that we take a look at when we do that. Employee education, training, and professional development, we continue to do that, always trying to make sure that we get everybody that can grow within the organization. We want to get a bench, so as captains leave, chiefs leave, we have people who can move up in there, and can you make sure they get the best possible education that they feel they would like to develop themselves in. Collaboration and community partners, we work very closely with a lot of our other folks within the communities. We do that through our programs that we've offer, which is community outreach, as well as our wellness program as we go out, as you, as the chief had mentioned, the road shows and those types of things to do that. At the same time, we have worked very hard in our wellness process and for the mental health check-ins, as the chief mentioned as well, and we want to make sure we continue to give all of our employees that opportunity. Involvement in the evolution of the strategic plan, 2019 marks the renewal of our strategic plan, and as you can see by that chart below there, you will see that every month, we averaged about 4.6 of our goals that we have met through our key outcomes, and, and we have put those together as we move forward. We involve staff from all levels when we set and developed our strategic plan, and part of the process in reviewing the city's strategic plan to ensure that our department plan fits in line with what the council's strategic plan and city over plan is. 2019 strategic plan, effective in emergency response, operational effectiveness, take response, response action and step to reduce harm and minimize danger and damage, danger in the emergency settings. Employers' choice, this is one of the big ones that we're working towards now. Offer superior work culture that includes respective commitment with creating a safe workplace and will attract and optimize retained top talent. The other big thing that I didn't mention that we're doing is we're also started out as kind of an offshoot of the CSO program, is our cadet program. And what we're looking for is people with diversities that we can bring in and help set them in, in place, and help them work towards a goal at some point, who would make good firefighters for Maplewood, that we, when we lose someone, we can pull them off the bench. Plus, it meets and helps fit in with the demographics of the community we have. Tell our story, we like to do that. And again, too, it identifies risk in community and proactive work to protect lives and health of individuals in our community as well. And then financial responsibility that we have there, and obviously, take action to identify and qualify department's resources and responsibility accounting for all of the expenditures that we have. So, with that, we're going to tag team quick to Chief Mondor.
Thank you, Chief Lukin, Mayor, Acting Mayor and Council. See if I can make, so this doesn't screw up on me. There we go. So, over the past several years, and specifically in 2019, the department seeks out efficiencies and has experienced several efficiencies, and these pictures kind of highlight some of those efficiencies. In the bottom left, there's a picture of our engine responding into St. Paul on a closest unit dispatching assignment. So, that's something we implemented in 18 and 19, where it doesn't matter what says on the side of your truck, if there's a cardiac arrest or a structural fire, that truck is going. That historically did not happen. The Ramsey County Fire Chiefs Association received recognition for local government innovation by the Humphrey Institute of Public Affairs in 2018, so we're getting recognized at a regional and state level as well. Joint training with the police department and other entities around mental health awareness and crisis intervention. There's a picture there with our SWAT team, the Ramsey County SWAT team, and getting involved in countywide initiatives to make sure that when, if, if emergencies occur, that our entire team countywide is prepared to operate together. And also, something that I'm, I'm quite proud of is our involvement in bringing Pulse Point to Ramsey County. So, Pulse Point, as you're aware, is a crowdsourcing app that recognizes, notifies people of cardiac arrests in public places. In the bottom left, oh, I only hit it once. Bottom left, you can see Sergeant Duga was recognized by the Minnesota Ambulance Association as a star of life, and most of his, the reason for his recognition was around collaboration and efficiencies. So, mental health between the police and fire department, police department EMR training, training on de-escalation and other techniques that the police department brought to the fire department. We also have been working with American Red Cross to institute a home visit program. And in the bottom there is a picture of us working with Hennepin County and Minneapolis Fire and other entities to reach out to traditionally underrepresented populations. This is through the EMS Pathways Academy, and actually, we have interviews tomorrow to, to, several interviews to hopefully fill that fire medic cadet position, and we're extremely excited about that. Our firefighters are busy. I joke with my wife, she watches Chicago Fire, loves that show, and that is not what our firefighters are doing. They're not sitting around, they're not sitting around a table waiting for the next call. They're engaged in the community, they're training, they're out building relationships in the community, and these pictures highlight that. in the community, and these pictures highlight that. Whether it's a trip to the fire station by a local school, our paramedics working side-by-side with the police officers doing the senior roadshow, or at large community events where they can share their superhero garb, our firefighters are out there in the community doing great work. Some fast facts, in addition to what Public Safety Director Nado already mentioned, our bike rodeo averages over 150 attendees. We give 30 to 50 bike helmets away to people that otherwise couldn't afford or have access to those helmets, preventing harm in the community. In the first half of this year, we've trained over 500 people in hands-only CPR and AED awareness, and we're continuing towards our Heart Safe Community goal. After our outreach to Rolling Hills, this was one of my favorite moments actually of the year, our crews went out and canvassed Rolling Hills after they had given these kids bike helmets, and they ticketed them with Dairy Queen coupons. So, they got caught wearing their bike helmet, and our firefighters rewarded them with free ice cream. So, that was, that was really fun. And then, we're also thinking about broader participation, the community and teamwork up there. We're celebrating with our wellness trophy, eating blizzards, because it was Miracle Treat Day. So, our team is very invested in the overall community and wanting to give to the Children's Miracle Network, Gillette Hospital, et cetera. Training collectively as a group in 2019 will log over 4,000 hours of training, whether that's fire and EMS requirements, but some of the higher-level initiatives in 2019 have included mental health, water and ice rescue, partnership with XL Energy on electric and gas response, cancer awareness, and emergency vehicle operations. Finally, some of our challenges, as Chief Lukin alluded to and Public Safety Director Nado also acknowledged. We've transitioned to a completely full-time department. That has been a great transition, but it's not come without challenges, trying to staff up with the amount of people that we're trying to hire. Family medical leave, people getting injured has caused some strain on the workforce, but we've been able to maintain our staffing levels. Information sharing, that predominantly goes around some of our mental health outreach that Chief Nado had mentioned. Historically, we've really struggled to recruit for this fire medic cadet position and building a workforce that's representative of our community. We completely revamped how we recruited for that position, and more than tripled our applicants, and more than tripled the makeup of those applicants. As I just mentioned, logging over 4,000 hours of training. We are an all-hazards agency. There's enhanced, every year, there's more and more demands on what our firefighters are expected to train to. And all of these strains and some of the call volumes, as Councilmember Knutson mentioned, that call volume continues to escalate. That does strain our ability to do more proactive things, but we continue to get creative and overcome those issues. Some of those leave issues have created some overtime challenges, which we're continuing to work on. And then, while we're very happy with our current contract with our fire marshal, we acknowledge that he's entering near total retirement. Public safety people generally have a tough time transitioning, but he's getting to a point where we're going to have to look at how we continue to fill that position in the future as he goes formally into retirement. And with that, we would stand for any questions.
Councilmember Neblet.
Thank you, Acting Mayor. I don't know if I have a question, but I do have a comment. Not only do you protect and serve, but you do community policing, for lack of a better word, which makes me proud as a citizen. Thank you. I, thank you. The other thing I want to say is, the annual report that you all did, that we got, I think in our mailbox, I don't know if we ever talked about it before, but the annual report and the use of force report was outstanding. And I think that the public should have access to those two documents, because they are. They are, it tells the public exactly what you all are doing. So, good job there, but thank you very much.
Any other comments or questions? Thank you to all of our public safety people. Without you, we probably wouldn't survive, let's face it. With that, I think we will have to wait for the Jeff Thompson Show till next time. We'll try to weather it. With that, I will adjourn this workshop, and we will reconvene at 7:10.